Welcome to the Town of Acton Planning Board meeting on March 10th at 7 o'clock. All stands for the pledge. Pledge of reasons to the Senate.
United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands on nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice.
We'll just do them next week.
It's up to you. You guys got a bunch of minutes to deal with.
I think we have three, right?
Yeah, and you've tabled them last week.
Did everyone, did everyone else have a chance to read them?
Didn't do his homework.
Look at that smile on Gavin's face.
No, I'm just asking.
He did my homework yesterday.
Because it would, yeah, ideally, it would be easier tonight than next week, but it's fine. It's my opinion. So I will move that we table discussion on approval of any previous meeting minutes until next week.
Checking.
All in favor?
Are you writing down motions?
It'll be in the, they'll get it on the video and all the minutes. Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay.
All right, we'll start. Want to start on just the definitions first?
Actually, if you don't mind before we do that, because there was a communication that I sent out by email to board members that I'd like to read that into the record. And before I do that, I was given a letter by Mr. Sevigny to read into the record. This is a letter from Lee Robitour, addressed, it was dated March 6, 2022. It's addressed to the Town of Acton Planning Board, and it reads as follows, and I'm reading this in at Mr. Robitour's request. He wants this placed on our record. Dear Planning Board members, after reviewing the February 17, 2022 Planning Board meeting on YouTube, I wanted to clarify one point of Matt Peppin's presentation in regard to Square Pond Improvement Association, SPIA, as being supportive of the Peppins project between West Shore Drive and the H Road. Please be advised that the SPIA organization has not taken an official position on the Peppin project. As a resident of Acton living on West Shore Drive, I had reached out to the Peppin family to learn of their plans for the property. My support of the family's plans for the property is personal and not in an official capacity as president of SPIA. Thank you. Lee Robitour, carbon copy, to David Peppin. So the other request that I had of the chair to read into the record is that on March 9 of 2022, I sent the following email to everyone on the planning board, to our code enforcement officer, and to the administrative assistant in the code enforcement office. And it reads as follows. Hello, everyone. I don't know why this keeps disappearing. Okay. Hello, everyone. As I relayed at today's planning board workshop, I believe that Title 33, Main Revised Statutes, Chapter 28A, Subsection 1423, precludes the town from prohibiting the installation/use of solar energy devices on residential property owned by that person, as well as solar clothes drying devices on residential property leased or rented by that person. Towns can impose such restrictions on residential properties owned jointly by a third party and on commonly owned property, such as a condominium. There are several exceptions to this, such as in instances involving public health/safety, historic aesthetic values when, when alternative of comparable cost exists, alternatives of comparable cost exist, and in shoreline districts as defined by state law. Given that the town can only preclude an owner of residential property from placing solar panels on his or her property in these limited circumstances, both as to roof-mounted and ground-mounted units, I am going to suggest that we simply remain silent on this issue and defer to state law in enforcing any perceived infractions. I also discovered that Title 35A, Chapter 34D of the Main Revised Statutes governs ground-mounted solar panels occupying three or more acres of land. This includes procedures for permitting and for decommissioning fees, et cetera. We discussed these issues by phone with Keith of North Star, and that discussion took place in a planning board workshop that was recorded. Just so you know, that language is not included in my email, but just to let the public know that. We discussed these issues by phone with Keith of North Star. He agreed with my legal analysis, but disagreed on how we should proceed. It is my opinion that we should not proceed at all on a solar ordinance. There's not much that we can govern as to residential solar systems. The state already has permitting and decommissioning processes on solar panels placed on three acres or more. Is it possible that we might want to add additional conditions on solar farms of three acres or more? Absolutely. It's more than possible, probably likely. I suggest that if we do not enact an ordinance on solar farms, that we still maintain oversight over them via the conditional use permit process. This also implicates the good neighbor policy. I believe that, given this information, we arguably have more flexibility in making decisions than we will if we codify a solar panel ordinance, because then we would be limited to the parameters of that ordinance. The conditional use permit process leaves us much more flexibility in making decisions. Pat expressed a concern over whether or not we would be able to decline a conditional use permit based solely on the size of a proposed farm versus establishing a maximum size via ordinance. And again, that discussion took place during a planning board workshop and on the record. My thought is that we are given the authority to require the engagement of professionals to advise us on decisions that we are not qualified to make. We can require the applicant to pay for those associated fees. Frankly, I think that would be totally appropriate as to any proposed restrictions in the proposed draft from North Star. Let me read that again, I'm sorry. Frankly, I think that would be totally appropriate, as any proposed restrictions in the proposed draft from North Star is not specifically tailored to Acton through any expert opinion or data, et cetera. Just my opinion. We will discuss all of this at our 7:00 PM meeting, and I will read this email into the record. I just wanted everyone to have a chance to reflect on it prior to the meeting, as we have a great deal of items to cover at the meeting and are starting an hour later than usual. Bernie, so just so the public knows, that's, in my opinion, my understanding, that's not an inappropriate email, because it's been read into the record. No one on the planning board responded to my email. There was no dialogue or discussion about the issues I raised. It was simply sent so that people would have a chance to think about it prior to tonight's meeting and to save time in what we do tonight. Thank you.
So to touch on that, why I feel that we shouldn't table it away, or, well, you guys have the decision. You guys vote on it. Main is a home rule, home rule state, meaning that the state sets guidelines, and the towns have the ability to follow those guidelines or make their own guidelines stricter, but not less lenient. All right, we are not prohibiting solar panels. We are, because what we are doing is we're saying, even though, which the planning board tailored it to Acton, because they asked for the not, for ground-mounted not to be provided or allowed in the Shoreland District, Little Ospey District, Resource Protection. Now, you're not prohibiting them because it still allows roof-mounted. So no, we are not doing anything that we're not supposed to be doing. We are completely following the guidelines and that statute. And so your alternatives were not, they have, their alternative is roof-mounted, and if they can't put it on their roof, they're capable of building, an outbuilding, and putting it on that roof. So that gives you that means of alternative thing. So, being a home rule state in towns, no different than Chapter 1000, Acton has decided, decided in the past not to adopt Chapter 1000, which is the Shoreland District. For people who don't know, it's the Shoreland District Guidelines. Acton, Acton made its own. The ordinance, also, I was provided with some other ordinances that North Star Planning has made for other municipalities, that some, that one does look a lot like the one for Acton, and it's being drafted and doing the same process as what we're dealing with right now and going to town vote. And all those have been pretty much pushed forward to town vote now, and just waiting on that vote. I also have a letter, just so Keith had something to say here, as North Star Planning, he's like, "Hi, Jason. We feel that the planning board has done a lot of work on this ordinance, and it is currently in a form that could take the next step towards passage at this year's town meeting. That would be appropriate. The board may have more questions or want more information and may not be ready for it to move on. This is also appropriate." If that's the consensus of the board, we do, we don't believe that the proposed ordinance creates any conflicts with the state law, but if the board has concerns, these questions are best referred to municipal lawyers, attorneys. The state statutes on solar are designed to be permissive, meaning that they are meant to encourage solar development. We have worked on solar ordinances with a handful of other main municipalities and are confident in the, in the ability of towns to modify their, their land use ordinance to provide parameters around solar energy generation. Our goal in Acton is to work with the board and help develop the ordinance language that, that is right for Acton. If we are not there yet, then the board should vote accordingly, and we can, and we can continue to fine tune it. But that is for the board to decide. Thanks, Keith.
Well, I, I'm not sure. I certainly agree with the idea that state guidelines are guidelines, but we're dealing with a statute, not guidelines. So I'm not sure that I agree with that analysis.
Excuse me.
Let me just put this out as an idea for consideration. I'm not saying that what's been proposed by North Star conflicts with state law, but I am questioning whether, in view of the state law that we're now aware of, whether our local proposed ordinance is necessary, and whether, as I've indicated in my email, whether if we codify, codify what's been proposed, then we're limiting things that the board could otherwise do if it came in under conditional use. So with that in mind, if the board ultimately agreed with me, I think that the only potential thing that I see conflicting with state law, in my opinion, is item F, renewable energy installed on a non-existing structure. And if we struck non-solar, so that it applies to all renewable energy installed on a non-existing structure, went over to resource protection, which indicates it's not permitted, and added a footnote.
Bernie, can I, can I just stop you? Because we're not, we're on the 11th hour right now. We can't, we're not able to remake adjustments for this new warrant article. So it's going to be a vote to move it forward or not.
The only one thing I see in this, and it's, none of us really caught it, it's kind of open-ended, like how do, when they're done with it, and all the panels are down, and the structure's down, how do they get their money back?
The state.
Right.
In this, in this ordinance here, that's something we did talk about.
Yeah.
And then, where, let me look into, part number eight, I think.
I guess one of my biggest things, too, is, is our ordinance is, is written to help eliminate confusion and help guide people in directions. And by leaving it to the state statute or state, whatever you're referring to.
I call it statute.
Yeah, so, well, either whatever you want to call it. It's, it's leaving for a lot of confusion, a lot of not knowing, not having that knowledge unless somebody comes in, and then what? I point them to the state statute?
Yes, and they're going to have to come in and see you anyway, because it requires CEO review. So they're all going to have to come in to see you anyway.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So to address what you were saying, Chris.
Yeah.
Jen Ru spoke with us yesterday about number eight here. Mostly the last sentence, the surety or performance guarantee shall be kept in effect throughout the lifetime of the system, and the form and amount of financial security will be reviewed by the...
That's a misspelling, too, by the way. Sorry.
Oh, surety. Surety, I guess it was a mispronunciation on my part.
Yeah, sorry.
I said security.
Yeah, that's why I said it was misspelling. It's not.
Very close. Shall be reviewed by the select board designated every five years or renewed or adjusted as necessary. And so she suggested that in that sentence, that we either eliminate some of the language, or we substitute in the planning board instead of the select board, because they don't really deal with the decommissioning amount.
Right.
And that we do have some verbiage that makes sure that the money isn't given back before the project is fully cleaned up.
Right, that's what I was talking about.
So we, we would have to add a little bit of verbiage to number eight, in my opinion, to address that particular issue if we were liking this document.
I guess I don't understand why we can change anything in this, other than correcting clerical errors based on what you just said, Jason.
Well, no, I think, I think we can still change this. We just, we have to work with the Warren Finance Committee and make sure they'd be willing to understand we were still in process on this thing and that they...
I agree with you, Gavin.
Right.
What I'm saying is, I was cut short.
I know.
And told that we cannot do it.
Well, because you were looking to go, you were looking to dissect this whole thing.
No, I'm looking to propose one change that would eliminate everything else, the need for everything else, if the board agreed with me.
Okay.
That's all. And if I'm wrong, that we can't do it, just tell me. But we, either we can or we can't.
No, well, the way it was going was, just seemed like there was, it was going to be a lot of, and I apologize for, for cutting you off.
Okay, so. If, yeah, if we can, if, under F.
F on the landing.
Renewable energy installed on a non-existing structure. Okay. It indicates across all of the districts that a conditional use permit is required, except resource protection, and it says that it's not permitted. Okay. Now, I believe that that may conflict, that it does conflict with state law, to say it's not permitted, period. So I would suggest change, having the N and a footnote, as we have in other instances, and stating, okay, number four says accessory, this is on page two, accessory solar energy systems generally require CEO review, except that site plan review is required for ground-mounted systems that are accessory to other uses, other than single and two-family dwellings, and there's a site. Okay, now this is all I want to suggest, that we add to the footnote these words. Any exceptions to the prohibition of renewable energy in the resource protection zone pertain only to ground-mounted solar panels. So that's the only instance where you might get an exception, and it is governed by 33 MRS, Chapter 28A, Subsection 1423-4. And that is the provision in the law that says that you can prohibit panels in certain instances, like the shoreline zoning, like historical buildings, if there is not a comparable cost alternative of it, so, and so forth. There's four instances. So what I'm saying is, we're clarifying that they are, generally speaking, they are prohibited in resource protection, which we have the right to do, but there are exceptions to that prohibition. They only relate to solar panels, ground-mounted, and they are only the ones that are required by the statute. So that's what I want to propose. And, and my suggestion is, if we do that, then I would eliminate the rest of what's been proposed, because I think it's already governed by the state.
Can I ask you a question? What is your definition of a resource protection zone?
Oh, where's my ordinance book?
I don't know if we want to.
This has really been under review over the years, and this goes back many years.
Yeah.
Where they marked it out, and there was no reason for it, and then there's...
Okay, but it does exist.
If I'm in a resource protection area, and I want to put up a solar thing, you're going to immediately say you can't do it. Is that what you're saying? No. What are you saying?
Joe, I appreciate your opinion right now, but this isn't a public hearing, you know.
Why don't you guys just continue on?
Sorry about that.
You understand, we're just trying to get through.
Okay.
A little cranky.
Like 12 angry men, but there's only four of us.
A little, a little cranky.
There isn't, wasn't any response.
That's a good point. I forwarded.
Emails, there was a response, sorry.
Yeah, John is aware, because I forwarded to him.
Okay.
The same email.
There wasn't really, though, a response that, I don't know if it really constitutes being read aloud. It was just...
Okay, I received your email, and?
Well, I said, isn't that, oh, shoot, what was it? I'll read it, because it, it should. I mean, this is his opinion, but it's nothing substantive. So this was received today. Well, isn't that disappointing support from our contractor in this case? I'm blissfully ignorant of your discussion yesterday, which was the workshop discussion, but I don't see, given the magnitude of the required edits now to our solar change, how this can go forward with the required research, so a cap on size, for instance, isn't merely arbitrarily established. This probably falls into the same category as mineral extraction, do it right for next year. This note is a, for what it's worth, since I cannot attend tonight and haven't heard the entire discussion. So that's his opinion.
I should say, just in response to what you said about changing the chart, that I do kind of agree with Jason, that we're not prohibiting solar arrays in the resource protection district, because they can put it on their building, or they could do their 30% expansion, put it on their garage, if, you know, after they did that. They have, they, we're not prohibiting them from putting up solar panels. We're just asking them not to put up ground-mounted arrays.
Right.
So I mean, I, I do feel like we have the two sides of that going, and it's not a prohibition. We're not saying they can't put up solar panels.
I think it's, is this ready to go forward, or is it, or is it ready to, or is it more work?
Well, this is the key issue that we're discussing, in, from my opinion, that I'd like to have threshed out before I go either way, because either of the options presented to me pertain to this specific detail of, of solar.
I, I want to find the statute and see how that reads, Gavin, about...
Well, I just feel like the word prohibit, prohibit.
Prohibiting or prohibition.
I think you know what I'm saying.
Provision.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it doesn't say that you can't prohibit either. That's all.
I think I remember saying you needed to be able to give an alternative view, means.
Other than ground mounted.
Yeah, within a reasonable cost, I thought it was, something like that, but I could be completely wrong. I've been wrong many times, so.
So if someone can't do a roof-mounted, then what's the fallback, I assume would be ground-mounted?
Well, we're giving them, no, we're giving them an option to do a roof-mounted, so...
Yeah, but if they can't, because it's, the roof won't support it.
Then they have to redo their roof. That's their option.
It's a historic building. It's in the Shoreline District. Those are the exceptions that the, yeah, well, let me just find what the law is.
When we talked about this, remember, some of the, some kind, I think Dennis and, when you guys were here in the public hearing, they said some towns do require.
Right, required.
Roof rafters and stuff like that, and make sure that it's going to handle.
I ran into an old building that had two-by-six roof rafters. You can imagine how that roof looked, you know?
Yeah.
So somebody came in and says, hey, I'm looking to put a roof-mounted system on that. I'd say, I'm sorry, you can't, it won't support it. If you have to beef up your roof. But then they get the, you do the, you do the work. You want them, you know, and then you can have your thing, you know? That's, you're allowing it, you just have to do the work. It's not saying, we're not saying no.
I think there's a difference between prohibiting and regulating.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. No, I just want to see how it reads.
I mean, other than changing that one sentence they opened in, is the number eight?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think that definitely does need to be brought, that does have to be added to the, with the decommissioning and the...
Yeah, that needs, if, if we're going to take this document, I mean. I mean, there's no way we're voting to send this document forward. It's going to have to be changed, whether it's substantially or just slightly.
Yeah, and we might, I might, the Warren Finance Committee might be able to grant us a little bit of time, but that's not from my decision. That would be...
I can speak on that.
Yeah, well.
Being the chairman of the Warren Finance, the schedule that the planning board was given, it was not from the Warren Finance. It was from the Board of Slotting. And what the Warren Finance Committee is doing, it is working according to the schedule that the Slotting put out. So whatever you guys work out with Board of Slotting, as chairman, I'm going to say is fine with the Warren Finance. So don't.
Don't stress?
Not for us, you know, because we've got another five weeks to go through everything, so.
We were just, yeah, I just knew that you guys had a lot going on. You have a bunch of articles.
I just left school. We got school Tuesday night, Thursday night, we got Warren Finance Monday night, so we do have a lot going on. But the schedule that you guys were given was something that was...
Just a structure.
From the, from the Slotting, and then they asked the Warren Finance Committee, does the schedule work for you? Yeah, we'll do whatever we gotta do, we're gonna work best for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always good news.
Yeah.
Something works for us, don't you think?
Yeah, because what I'm not finding is a definition of solar energy device, and I doubt that it's limited to rooftop, but... I can't speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, there's other types of solar collectors, too, the things that look like telescopes and hourglasses and you name it. There's, it's not just panels.
Yeah, you have the water, the ones that, the old, older systems where you heated water on your roof.
Yeah, the old.
Right, that, yeah, it's true. That is solar energy. So it is.
Actually, I bet it's in.
Well, you're looking for the definition of solar energy system?
Solar energy device.
Oh, okay, because we have solar energy system right in front of us, and it says a device or structural design feature.
All right, well, um.
Yeah, when I, Bernie, uh, the three of us, you, Pat, and myself, all kind of thought about this since yesterday, and probably have some sort of inclination as to how we feel on it, but.
Yep.
We really just need to get Chris to, I mean, that's kind of why I wish, I guess we got John's opinion, sort of, but, um, we just have to get everyone to. Think about it, I guess, I don't know.
I was fine with it, except for when that was brought to my attention on number eight.
Right.
You know, to be honest, I mean. And I'm seeing, and I hold Jason's standpoint of, the way, they're going to have to come to him, and he's, he can be the final say on what Bernard's talking about, I believe. I don't think North Star would steer us in the wrong direction either.
No.
Well, I'm not suggesting that anyone is.
No, I'm not saying you are either.
Steering us or intentionally, but what I would point out, because you weren't here at the workshop, was when we called Keith, and I cited the statute, he said that was the first time anyone has done that. So it's not like they were aware of it, and proceeding in a certain way, aware of it, he wasn't aware of it. Um, so, I don't know, maybe, maybe someone should just make a motion and take it from there. Clearly, I'm.
Aware of it at the time, however, he did come back and with a, with an explanation when he called back.
Right.
He's new to North Star, he started just this year, two thousand twenty-one was his first year with North Star, um, and working on these ordinances, so.
Yeah.
That's why he has to, when, if he doesn't know, he's good enough to say, I'll find out, you know, or I'll do my best.
Which is true for all of us, that's all we can do.
I had given Bernie earlier, because he came in, I had given him some ordinances, other ordinances that they had drawn up, um, for, for instance, for the town of Freeport, and it looks a lot similar to the one that Acton has, um, but Acton's got tailored a little bit more to them, as well as the town of Naples, which the ordinance, it's actually a lot more, the article's a lot more compacted, um, the Freeport one's got to be like seven pages long. Um, and then Hampton, Maine, or something like that, was another one that they worked on, so. But like I had stated earlier, they're all in the same process as we are right now, um, they're making, they're working through the planning board and then getting to the point, or they're up for town vote, I think one's, up is up for town vote on March fourth, I just don't know how it went, I didn't really dig into it that far.
Well, I think in terms of the town vote, people are generally in favor of somehow regulating these things, but they, I'm not sure that the people voting on it will even be updated as to whether or not this is the way they want to regulate it.
Right. All I can say to that, is, all I can say to that is that the, the change, proposed changes will be, um, online as early as next week, so anybody who's, wants to go on the town website will be able to see it. Uh, because it is a big, it is a big change, there's a lot of information to it, and should be read through before making a decision, um, at something like a town meeting, unless they're just looking to regulate it, you know, they're thinking that we're just better off regulating it now.
Well, and they may not realize it already is regulated.
But so isn't everything in the shoreline district, but Acton decided to make its own ordinance, didn't they? And so that's kind of where we're at right now.
Just to point out some things to you, Chris, that would be, say we decided not to put this thing forward, um, if you look under C-dimensional standards, some of the things that we have put in there that were, that are more stringent than the STI are, the maximum developed area slash area of disturbance per solar farm, number two, they are twenty acres, whereas I don't know what the, I'm not sure the state even has a threshold, um, I don't remember finding one yesterday, so we set that threshold, um, the, the maximum height for ground mounted solar facilities, we have twenty-five feet, I think that the state would, would probably go with the, with something more than that, like.
Thirty-five.
The, the building height, maximum building height, but then you look, certain towns have a higher building height than others, so, um, that twenty-five feet probably wouldn't be, probably would be more than that. Um, we've got this, the minimum setbacks, front, side, and rear, we changed to seventy-five feet from what North Star had, I can't remember exactly what he had before that.
It was, it was fifty or something like that, I just made it.
So that was something that we increased, you know, as a safeguard, as a visual.
Right.
Buffer, and then, um, then in the, um, solar farm district standards, the, um, solar farms that have frontage on a private or public road must maintain a fifty-foot wooded buffer at the property's edge side and rear wall lines, that was something that we beefed that up a little bit, we increased that buffer, um, and made sure it was on all the sides, not just on the roadside, because I think the original verbiage they had was that any solar farms that have frontage on a public road must maintain a fifty-foot wooded buffer on the property's front, or something like that. So we did somewhat beef that up.
Right.
Um, and then. But I mean, those are all things that, in a conditional use permit, we could request of the applicant, but having those actual numbers in the ordinance would, would give us a firmer backing, it's going to be hard to, to tell a project that comes in, they want fifty acres of solar panels, and to tell them without the numbers in the ordinance that they should only have twenty acres, when they want to have fifty as the proposal, is going to be a different, difficult sell for the planning board.
Right.
Um, those were kind of the things that I found like that we, that would be kind of slipping through the cracks if we got rid of this thing.
Right.
But a lot of what's in there is, is covered by the state in terms of the, um, wetlands and state identified natural resources, um.
I did find the definition when, I don't know if you're done yet.
I think that was most of the, you know, like, the, the standards that we changed at all from what was initially in this thing.
Okay, solar energy device, which is what we can't prohibit.
Yeah.
Means a solar collector or a solar clothes drying device. So what is a solar collector? Solar collector means a device, structure, or part of a device or structure that is designed and used to transform solar energy into thermochemical or electrical energy to meet the water heating, space heating, space cooling, or electrical generation requirements of one residential dwelling. So I would again, just my opinion, state that if somebody wants to put a solar energy device, and it's a single-family dwelling, that absent the exceptions outlined in the law, we cannot prohibit it and tell them that it has to be roof mounted, because I think if you say, no, you can't do ground mounted, you're prohibiting a solar energy device, a form of it, but. That's all I'm going to say?
Yeah.
I think whether it goes through or not, there's still a few changes that need to be done either way, right?
Would you? Just footnote the end for, under F.
Yeah, I don't think we, we need to do that personally, but.
Or we vote on it as it is, or, well, without the, we're changing number eight around a little bit, the verbiage on that, I think we have to.
I don't, yeah, I think you just need to figure out if you want to move it forward or not, but I don't think it's, it's not ready to vote on, because we've got to make some changes to it and then review them. You know, it's, it's deciding whether you want to continue to spend time with it, or, yeah, or not.
Well, I'll just, I'll make the motion, I move that we do not proceed this year on the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to solar energy systems.
Do you, did a little bit of discussion, I know we already had discussion, of course, but, um. So that motion would, would in effect scrap this document.
For this, I said for this year.
Yeah.
So we could continue to work on it, if the motion carried.
I guess I'll second the motion, we might as well vote on it, right?
I mean, if you want, or if it doesn't get seconded, then it just disappears.
Yeah, but it's.
Really, so if you second it, you're agreeing with it?
Oh, right, no.
I'm not sure that's necessarily.
I don't know, I'm.
Yeah, no, he can vote either way.
Generally, that's true, right?
Usually people don't second it unless they're going to vote, but he's still free to vote, he's just putting it out.
I don't know, I just, I don't, I don't have a vote anyway, so I was just asking a question, I just, I'm just sitting back, I'm going to get off camera now.
Well, I just, I kind of anticipate a, a two-to-two vote.
Well, that's kind of.
And that, um, in which case we would be able to include John in the decision, had another meaning, basically.
I, in terms of discussion, um, I recognize that we've done a lot of work on this, but I don't think that having done a lot of work on something is a good reason to put something forward that isn't ready, and I don't think it's ready. Whether you go the way I'm suggesting, or whether we start making a lot of changes, I don't think it's ready. And tonight's our last night, so.
And I honestly don't think we've put that much time and effort into this thing, I think North Star kind of created it, and, and we've been trying to work with what they gave us. Not that again.
Every time I get this guy, I just, I'm going to throw him all out.
So, you know what I mean, I don't feel like we actually spent that many hours on this document.
No, I think we handed it to North Star, they, they did a good job, and I think any of our changes we asked them to, they responded well with it, and, I mean, that's my opinion, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
And we gave someone to do the work, they did the work, and they did a good job. Is it lengthy? Yeah, but there's three different types of solar farm panels or whatever in, in this, that's why it's lengthy thing. So, I don't know. I mean, other than the minor change in the verbiage in, was it eight?
Mm-hmm.
That I think would do well at the town, probably. If we don't do something now, it's another whole year, how many more could move in? How much more land do we lose for, for say, potential farming? You know, you have.
Hard to know, yeah.
I mean, any, any decision we make, we have to look seven generations before, after us, too, because it doesn't just affect that, it affects everything like that. So, I mean.
Well, actually, it would, um, in terms of the farmland concern, it would have to remain as solar panels, because under state law, um, if someone places solar panels on what is, what is or has been farmland for up to five years prior, when they decommission it, they have to take all the necessary steps to restore it to be farmland again.
It's kind of hard to do when it leaches lead and stuff into the environment, I mean, that's.
Well, that is something I'd like to see, that isn't in here, is, is maybe soil tests on the site before the array is put in, and then soil tests after it's taken out, if it is farmland, I mean.
But even if they don't, say, if it's just open land, say Gavin wants to buy that land to farm on, he should have the option, not just, I'm not just saying leave it open for other people to purchase it, you know what I mean? It's, you got to look at potential risks of having solar farms or regular farms, but if they're solar farms, they're fine, but still, we want other people to have the option to farm in this community.
Yeah, I understand.
That's my scattering.
But that's really limiting somebody's private property interest. I own fifty acres of land, and I have the opportunity to develop it or sell it for use as a solar farm, and you're suggesting I shouldn't be able to do that because somebody might want to have a farm there someday.
Well, no, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying we have to look at how we want Acton to go, too, do we want to just see solar panels all over the place, or are we going to keep the land more to other options? I'm not saying to prevent anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think this ordinance is really going to prevent these things from growing in the town.
It will regulate that.
Right.
Right, but it will give us bare-bones standards to be, to help us.
You know, if people were unplanable, and they had all the experience that someone who's been on the board for a very long time, or they have the expertise in the field, then I could, could understand leaving it open-ended, but I feel more comfortable having something in the town of Acton, and not just depending on someone coming to the planning board. I understand both sides, and I'm kind of torn, but I'm leaning toward keeping it, moving it forward, so another year doesn't go by. We've already spent all of this time into it, and I think that that's the reason to move forward with it, that's my position. Knowing we have to make changes to it.
So should we have a vote on Bernard's motion?
Yeah.
All in favor of Bernard's motion?
Do not move forward.
To not move forward?
Huh?
To all not in favor?
Two.
No, we'll see what happens next week, right?
Flip the coin?
Well, yeah, I mean, at this point, there's a standstill.
Yeah.
I guess.
High vote, Chris.
Yeah.
Uh, you have to, to be a positive vote, you have to have a majority.
Right.
And if you don't have a majority, then it's a no vote. Two to two is a no vote.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So do you want to work on this now, or go to others, or?
Let's get the other ones done, so we're not here till.
Yeah.
I do feel like we should bring this document to the workshop in the future.
So you mean you don't get a vote with John?
Well, I don't know, that, that's another discussion, what, what Dennis just said is.
Yeah, so what happens with the timeline? If John's in there.
Then it's a no, so.
It's not going to go forward.
My motion did not carry, because it was not, it's a tie.
A positive.
So it doesn't carry. So we, this is going forward, as matters stand.
No, wait till John's back and just do it.
Well, no, because this has to be in the select board tomorrow.
Well, we just got an extension on it.
By someone who has no authority to give it, I mean, is, is it possible? Maybe, yes, it is possible, that maybe, but the deadline that was set is tomorrow and Monday at the absolute latest, is what we were told. So, we can try. Okay, all right.
I think we know how John's going to vote.
Well, I think.
He doesn't have all the information.
Right, I mean, we just spent an hour informing Chris about the workshop yesterday.
And he wasn't even here yesterday either, he just got a recap.
Right, and I feel like it would be.
Yep.
Right, and I feel like it would be in good fairness to John to, to give him time.
It's a big deal.
In the discussion.
Right, because he brought up stuff about having one of those big ones that you see and move out front, you know, if on the lakes out front, someone tells if you're on the, on the other side.
Am I liking this according to the docs?
Okay, well, we've voted, we've got a lot of work to do, so I would suggest we move on.
Yeah, once we'll move on to an easy one, tiny houses? I don't know, at this rate.
Some of these didn't. I'm of the impression that this document is ready. And I should, we discussed this in the workshop, so I'll just state it for those who weren't here and for the public that at the public hearing, I think it was March 3rd on this, there were two issues raised. One was referring to a tiny house as manufactured housing. And basically, I, I did some research in the statute. The state's definition of manufactured housing includes both structures that are manufactured and leave on a chassis and structures that are manufactured and don't leave on a chassis. And so that is different from a tiny house because by definition, the tiny house has to come on a chassis. So that is why I'm suggesting manufactured housing stays in as, as it was used by the state, that we not amend the language that came from the state. The same applies to, item D is a vehicle without motive power. And someone said, what does that mean? Is it a typo? Did it mean motor power? And we, we changed it, but I went back and looked at it. Motive power, again, is a term defined by the state and it includes power of any type, like a locomotive powered by steam is motive power. So, again, I'm saying leave it the way the state wrote it because it's not a typo.
Yeah.
All right.
I don't think, I don't think we touched on anything else yesterday, did we?
It was just, we had some asterisk star problems, that was it.
Yeah.
Just made everything more uniform, I guess, followed the directions with the asterisks.
All right, I'll make a motion that we put the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to tiny houses forward to the warrant finance committee.
Second?
All in favor? Four nothing? Uh, let's see. Let's go to mixed use structures.
I gotta leave, Chris, but I do have a point of order.
Okay, can you be, I said.
Yeah, it's point of order, when you have a point of order, you're supposed to start the meeting and address the point.
Okay.
Okay, that's how it works and what it's through.
All right.
You guys are not, the plan board is not moving these ordinances forward to the warrant finance committee. You're moving them forward to the board of slotmen.
Correct.
Okay.
And then the board of slotmen.
And up to you.
Right, and that just Gavin's motion to move them forward to warrant finance committee, that is, that's not how it works and that's all I wanted to do.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, that's true, I didn't catch that.
Have a good night, Dennis.
I thought we already put these things forward to the selectmen.
Well, you just moved to put it forward, I believe, to.
No, I know, previously, before we did the hearing, we put these things forward to the selectmen already.
I don't think, no, we, we had got extra time because I think Jason was out sick and Ashley was.
Yeah, I don't think they've gone to the selectmen yet.
Yeah, I don't think we brought.
I'm not sure though, honestly.
I think too, what we're talking about is putting them forward in this.
That these are good to go.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just. I don't know. I'm just, yeah, I don't know.
All right, so this.
Do you, I'll, I'll make a motion.
All right.
Okay, so I'm.
That's fine.
Suppose worst case scenario, it was two vote. Warrant finance and the both. Planning board, the board of, the select board. All right, so I will move that we advance the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to tiny houses as reviewed today, March 10th, 2022, to the select board.
Second? All in favor? Four nothing? Mixed use structures.
Make a motion. We accept as written the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to mixed use structures. Moving forward to this, to the board of select.
Second?
Second?
All in favor? Four nothing? Residential rental units. I'm gonna switch my chair because I think I'm gonna break.
This one's a stiff one over here, it doesn't have wheels.
Try this one. It'll work for 250 pounds. Sorry.
Can I just suggest that we do the other two because they're quicker when they're done?
Structures.
Uh, we'll do the, yeah, that's fine. We'll start with the accessory dwelling units. Out of there.
The biggest, the biggest change we looked at yesterday, Chris, was that Jason added in B, C, and D.
Just for clarification, so people knew what we were talking about.
It was just the whole section as opposed to just A of the section.
Right.
I think that is useful. And I feel like it's complete the way it is.
All right.
Um, I will move that we advance the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to accessory dwelling units as we have reviewed today, March 10th, 2022, to the select board.
Second?
Okay.
All in favor? Four nothing? The proposed amendment to zoning ordinance relative to structure. Any changes yesterday to this or?
No.
We're not. I will move that we advance the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to structure as reviewed by the board today, March 10th, 2022, to the select board.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Four nothing? Here we go. Residential rental units.
I don't think we ended up finding anything we wanted to change except we added in or chief's designee at the very end.
Wasn't this the thing you pointed out a second ago?
It is, and there, there is one mistake and it was, it's my mistake. The last page, E. It should, after the words chief of the Acton Fire Department, should add, or the chief's designee, the same as item H does, is what we discussed. And I called item H to Ashley's attention but not item E, so it's my bad.
If you guys want to, I can make that change and you can still vote to move forward or you can.
Yeah, just to make a motion with, you know, with that change. A very small change. The only other thing that I was at all concerned with was that in the land use chart, you do have tiny house and it is highlighted. I wasn't sure if that wasn't, if that was something that we would regret doing or if we were just not concerned with it.
It was just one, yeah, we had talked about that. It was just the chances of, I think, the chance of the tiny houses getting shot down was slim, but it could. And if it does get shot down, then there's no point in it being in there, that would be, that would throw this whole document away, right?
So what would it, because the other thing is if it skips, if you take that out and it skips from J to L, what'd the chart say?
Reserved.
I think you could put reserved right there.
If it didn't make it, it would put reserved, yeah.
Or even just in this document, if we put it forward, instead of having tiny house, we would just have reserved for.
Something else.
Future use or something like that.
Okay.
And then, then we wouldn't be voting in tiny house by voting in this document.
Right, true.
Depends which order they are on the docket too, because if rental units comes first, they're gonna be saying, well, you're adding tiny house to a rental unit. Whereas if tiny house came first, it would kind of make sense that it was like this to, to the people in the audience. But I, I mean, it's not a huge deal, I just.
No, but I mean, either, either way, it could become one, depending on how, you know, because.
The way they've been picking this thing apart, I just don't want to.
Yeah, all right.
I've heard other feedback other than the public hearing too about this whole type of deal, to be honest. Sanford's tried it, it's backfired with just residential rentals, not Airbnbs, I guess. See who's gonna spend time in Sanford, let's be honest.
If, if they don't want it, then they'll vote it down, that's kind of how it's gonna work, you know?
Yeah.
You guys, either they're gonna, they're gonna accept it or they're not.
I feel like it's complete to go forward. We just have to see, see how it plays out, but maybe if we just had, um.
I don't feel strongly, I mean, we'll vote obviously when someone makes a motion, but I, I will say I don't feel strongly about it because I've done some research on the state laws and codes, fire codes and so forth, and I think, I mean, anything constructed in 1982 forward is pretty good. I think any rentals, they're supposed to have smoke alarms and CO2. In fact, there's a new law that went into effect, I believe this January, that you're supposed to have gas detectors. Everyone, if you have like a gas stove or whatever, so, um, I don't feel. Anyway, that's all I need to say.
Well, I still feel like the Acton Fire Department is in favor of this ordinance and that I'm in favor of it to support our public services request, really. You know, the, the fire department says this is something that would help us deal with calls and fires in the town of Acton and I might as well do anything I can to support their efforts.
I do want to say one thing on the issue of liability because prior planning boards have emphasized, you know, if you don't do this, you may have a liability, which I disagree with, but what has occurred to me is if we don't enact this and we follow the state laws that already exist, and I would opine that I think that people who are engaged in short-term rentals in Acton right now may already be in violation of the ordinance. And if that's true, then there are ways to enforce that issue. What my concern is that I want to highlight is, right now, we're saying we want the fire chief or the chief's designee to go out, look at the property, make sure they have smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, CO2 detectors, all of which are required except for the, the fire extinguisher. We want the chief to go out and look at that and to render an opinion that he believes this structure is safe. So, what if something happens?
And how many people can be in it too?
Right, but what if something happens and then the renter or the renter's family says, you have this ordinance or the owner of the property, we relied on you telling us how many people could be there, that there was sufficient egress and so forth. That, I think, does potentially establish a liability.
Well, they don't, there's, there's a math to the, the, there's a math to the amount of occupancy that you can have. They don't just go in there and say, all right, you got a six by six room, you can have, you know, that, there's five people in it. They, they take the square footage and they give you so much square footage per, per person in a sense.
Yeah, I don't, that's not, that's not codified anywhere.
Well, he's saying that the town could be liable if we sign off on a building as being safe, but then it, it, it turns out to not be safe. But the thing is, I just went and got my truck inspected and then it breaks down. I mean, it's, you can't go and say, oh, you should have known it was gonna break down, you just inspected it.
And some of these inspections. If someone passed, if someone passed that vehicle like as a favor or cut you some slack and you go out and the brakes fail immediately after and they can prove that that inspector, he or she would lose their right to do inspections.
Well, I think you're just going in to make sure that some of these things are compliant, they're not, go, I'm not, no one, especially the fire department isn't going into a structure making sure that all these, their structural codes are being met. Or they're coming.
There are also some, some codes they have to, that the insurance company requires, you know, they've got a wood stove in the house, in the rental unit, it's gonna need to have fireproof surfaces in front of it, on the wall behind it. X, Y, and Z are gonna be required by their insurance as well, and I feel like insurance, we're just, we're just making the job easier for the fire department and for the insurance companies.
Yep.
And this is this fire chief, well, if we get a new fire chief and they say we don't want part of us, then poor Jason's out there running around chicken.
Well, we'd have to take it to town, meaning to change it and say the CEO would have to do it. They, it wouldn't just revert to him.
And even then, if it's in the ordinance and it's his job responsibility, just because a new person comes in doesn't mean you can just say, I'm not doing this.
No, and I think that's why it's important that we put the designee in there because I don't feel like the fire chief is gonna be able to take the time to go to every one of these things, but that we do have personnel who are at the public safety building kind of, you know, where they do have some extra time when they're waiting for calls to be making these inspections and these people are already on the clock with the town and that it's a good use to fill up their time for time that they, they have.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I think it's, it's good public policy.
Discussion, yeah.
I, I agree with that. Part of my apprehension has been the degree of scrutiny that I feel we've been getting on everything we've tried to put forward, the requests for data and statistics and so forth that I personally, I, I find to be unreasonable. We're all volunteers, are we supposed to go out and research all this and so forth? Now, in view of that, I did go back and, because this, I'll call it initiative, to regulate what was then gonna regulate short-term rentals, started, I believe, in 2020. And the then planning board initiated this, at least from what I've viewed in meetings, solely from a meeting with the fire chief and the state fire marshal's office and the then code enforcement officer. And so, why I'm bringing that up is I feel in this particular instance because, and I, I'm not saying this to make it personal, I'm just saying. and I, I'm not saying this to make it personal, I'm just saying, I think it, it bears weight. If there is a lot of scrutiny about where's your data, where did this come from, how can you prove this, why didn't you look at that? A number of the people who will be asking those questions, because they serve on Warren Finance, were on the Planning Board that voted to advance this. And so, they advanced it based on that singular meeting with a fire chief, a state fire marshal, and so forth. So I don't feel that it's fair to ask us for any data, statistics, and so forth in addition to how they advanced their warrant article. Which didn't get heard because of COVID, and then it was heard in 2021. So because I've done that research, I feel more comfortable in saying, if we want to put it forward, yes. If I hadn't gone back and looked at those, frankly, I would have felt, you know, I, I don't want to go through this again.
I think this is, I think it's gonna, it's all gonna be who make, what people make for comments. I think this has a lot of good structure to it, I think, but then you have the the naysayers, or we're always gonna have them. They're gonna make their point and then the town will vote on it. I mean, I really, I think this thing's, you know, I just, I, I know I've heard scrutiny, but it's just, everybody's, there's someone that's gonna scrutinize everything.
And I don't think you're fair or biased opinion calling somebody else an outside source and that makes money from rankings.
And you don't miss any of the point, because somebody
That was a suggestion.
The people who are complaining about it now are the very people who put it forward in the first place.
Oh, I agree.
Correct.
I mean, I want to be clear about that.
Oh, I'll try, I'll try.
No, I, I agree, and again, it's not about personalities, it's factual. We are being, in my view, held to a higher standard, asked to do things that weren't done in the past. And I don't really understand it, but I do feel prepared to respond to it now, having looked at those.
And when this started too, it was just for short-term. And to make it fair, after the public hearing, we had the residential. So we actually did more work.
We have addressed, in my view, every concern that was raised, that it wasn't fair because it was short-term rentals, we're proposing all rentals. That it was not fair to impose the requirement, requirement of egress windows. We have removed that. It's just egress, period. Does not limited to the windows. I'm trying to think of the various examples, but to my knowledge, we have addressed every single one of them. And the bottom line is, if the voters don't want to have this regulation, that's entirely their right
Right.
to do that. But please don't say that it's because you didn't do this, you didn't do that, because we did do all those things. And the bottom line is, if they don't want it, then that's fine. It's not personal to me whether this passes or doesn't pass.
I think one of them, I won't, I can't remember who said it, but, so I won't throw the names, but they were, it was, when they asked about it to previous members, they said it was more geared to short-term rental. Or the Airbnb's, I believe. So, I mean, I think we're making it fair across the board for everyone, you're making money. Put some money back into the home or camp or something like that.
Let's do it as a motion.
Right.
Yeah, we've removed requirements that the person has to be there within an hour. We've, every, again,
Loosened up the septic requirement.
Every single thing that I'm aware of
Every single one.
we've done. So, that's all we can do.
No, they don't put in a traffic light sometimes, unless someone gets killed.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So this is a preemptive attempt.
Or traffic rotary.
You know,
Because those are safer.
Yeah.
Even if it did get kicked back on me for inspections, I wouldn't be opposed to it, so.
Oh, and that's where, kind of where I talked to, kind of both, was the feedback that I heard, it was like Sanford, I'll go back to Sanford, Sanford tried doing this and they just got lawsuit after lawsuit, or they were backlogged over three years to try to do it.
I don't know why you could have a lawsuit.
I don't know either.
Well, you know,
Yeah.
Another option
Verbiage was, right, I mean, I'm not an attorney.
Another option that I did consider today was to simply enact what is expected. You're to have the CO2, you're to have the fire extinguisher on every floor and so forth, and eliminate the registration and inspection. Because as people have pointed out, how do you know they're gonna do it? How do you know they don't remove it after you leave? What that does for us is, we've said what we believe needs to be there for it to be safe. If people don't do it, you may have heard me say during the public meeting, you know, it's not gonna go well for them in a civil suit if they violated the ordinance. I did some more research on that and I, I believe, there is, I, I don't want to mistake, my belief is that it's, that there's an assumption, maybe a veritable presumption, that you were negligent if you were in violation of an ordinance. So, we wouldn't have to do all of the inspections and registrations and so forth, we're simply adding another incentive for people to do what they should be doing. Just an idea, and then
I think it would might connect more accepted that way. Do we have a document? Are we gonna move forward?
As it stands, we, there's just a couple of grammatical. Item K, tiny house. Gavin proposed that it be, I believe, K, reserved.
And then all the boxes would be empty. Instead, instead of R, underlined, violated.
And then item E on the last page should include, or the chief's designee, period.
Would the, um, the boxes in the land use chart, where you have reserved, would those just be dashes throughout the boxes, or blank, empty?
Because then we have to say what a dash means.
Right.
Yeah.
Just say that blank.
Dash.
Yeah.
Um, there's one, there's a reserved on page 13 of the zoning ordinance in the land use chart. And they have N/A.
Not out.
So, I mean, I
Keep it the same?
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta follow suit.
Sounds good. N slash A, that's the way that one is, Jason.
Backslash, N backslash A?
Backslash.
Yep, backslash, not backlash, but
Could be backlash.
Could be, there probably will be. Okay.
All right, so I got changes on page three.
Oh, I do.
Changes on E, and then I need to, want to add a, the, the H. Yeah, just, or the, or the chief's designee, or, because it says, or chief's designee, does putting in the work or no, or I'm just asking.
Or, or chief's designee would be matched up with the H.
Yeah.
See how, see how H has or chief? See, one of the matches, or chief's designee.
Um, I just realized, I don't know why I didn't see this before, but the language about when they have to do this is missing. Because it
Must register, says, A and A.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, okay, great.
He is paying attention.
Okay.
By December 31st, 2022.
Yeah, you can't have the 20, you have to be open-ended, right?
Or within 30 days of first holding it out or renting. So, maybe.
Yeah, but what happens if they, these are news?
Or within 30 days of first holding property out for rental, so so if it occurs after December 31st, 2022.
Okay, okay.
Then we have the 30 days clause.
Thank you.
I think that's covered.
Yeah, now one of the objections that I saw in these older videos was that they, the proposed language was, you have to do it, I think it was July 1st or July 31st. And so people said, you know, you're gonna vote on this in June, and then we're supposed to have it done. You know, what it, but I think those objections go more towards, how are we gonna replace windows and so forth in that short a time? The code enforcement officers' response was, well, you know, it's about safety, and if it's not safe, then no, you shouldn't be renting it. I don't disagree, and, and I, you know, I was gonna suggest tweaking that, but on further thought, I think that, given that the standards have been relaxed, I mean, why would the town ever say it's okay for you to go ahead and rent, long as you get to it within a few months, putting in smoke detectors, CO2 detectors, and having a valid means of egress? Those things really should be there, or you shouldn't be renting, in my opinion. So that's how I would respond to that, if that objection comes up again.
Right.
Because I was gonna suggest a provisional permit and give them time, like within 30 days, but I, I don't think it's appropriate. So I'm not gonna move that, but.
All right, I'll make a motion we put forward to the selectmen, the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance for residential rental units.
With the proposed changes?
With the proposed changes discussed tonight.
One second.
Four, nothing? So. The only one question in this solar panel?
Yeah, and I guess, do we wanna schedule, have a workshop next Wednesday, where we can be? Well. Do we have a workshop scheduled for next Wednesday?
Don't know if we did.
You don't know?
No, I don't, I, I really don't. I think we had only scheduled them for February, and then we scheduled one for this week, just to get it. I, I could be wrong. I can find out tomorrow and let everybody know. I will find out tomorrow anyway and let everybody know.
And would, and would it be worth our addressing this thing out?
Right, someone needs to ask the select board, and they won't meet until next Wednesday.
Right.
I don't, maybe, Chris, maybe there's a way, if you speak to Jennifer, that she can speak with them? I don't, well, I think that would require a vote, probably.
I kind of thought we still had workshops, because we wanted to work on the mineral extraction ordinance for next year as well.
Yeah, I don't know if they're scheduled.
Yeah.
They are great.
Well, maybe we should figure out what kind of workshop schedule we want, if any.
I think we need to do them where everybody can be here. You know, I think Chris, if he's gonna, in, in Pat or John, I think it's good to do it within times where people, because you know.
The workshops?
Yeah.
Well, I think the whole point of the workshop is that we don't have to all be here, so that
Okay, oh, so then
Because we don't need a clause for this stuff, but like the mineral extraction and stuff, I think we should all have. Well, it's the same thing, it's just writing up a draft.
We can't vote.
No, no. Of a propos, proposed changes and then bringing them to the board, so that, so that I'm not just at home writing out my proposed changes and bringing those to the board, that we actually had a two or three people had a back and forth and, and came up with the thing, had a workshop as opposed to just one person. I mean, it's not, I'm just, I'm just curious what's happening with the workshops, that's all. Because I feel like we, we need further discussion as to whether or not we're gonna try to reform this document. Whether it's for this, to try and pull it in this year, or, which doesn't seem feasible, or just generally, or if we're gonna scrap the thing. You know, I, I feel like that really warrants discussion.
Well, it sounded to me like those that favored advancing it would like to get that done this year.
Sure.
So, even though I disagree with it, I think the way to possibly make that happen would be to reach out to the town administrator, see if the select board would give us like another week. We, we know from the chair of the Warren Finance Committee that they have other things to work on, so they're okay with it coming in later.
Yeah.
And if the select board is, and people do want to try and get it done this year, then that might still be possible.
And if it's not, then next year.
Then, right, we can continue.
It wasn't voted on, so. I can't, off the record, I can't see them saying no.
Yeah, I think they'll say it's okay.
Yeah.
On the record. You can still express an opinion, as far as I know.
Yeah. I do, I do, and those are just for preparation. We still, I believe I might see more documents tomorrow. The operations manual is not here yet, and I think reclamation plan is, I was told they might be here tomorrow. But what I can give you is, what I do have, what I would like though, and I
I tried to, yeah.
I don't know how appropriate it is, but, so we don't have confused documents. I'd like to get the old documents back, because we're no longer using what we're using is the new
I already used them in my fire pit, to be honest.
Hard to get them back from that.
Yeah, just because I don't want to have any confusion, so I want to make sure that what we are reviewing is the documents that have been presented, not the old documents. It's kind of
That, that came up for me with the drafts we've been doing week to week, not on any particular project. The drafts we're just looking at right now and advancing. And I think in the future, it would be helpful when we do a new draft to put the date on it. And then we know if it's, which one we're looking at.
Well, yeah, and I just started just deleting the old ones, because there was just too much confusion and chaos going on.
Yeah, although, see, I carry my old paper one, because I want to look at the notes I made and then look at the new document and make sure it tracks.
It's not good.
Put it in here.
Yeah, it's kind of where I'm, and then any, on the launch, I read them at work.
Now I'm okay with getting rid of these priors, because we're in final form.
That's close, Pat.
Do you guys want me doing this live camera, or do you want to?
Do that, sure, fine. What do you have any?
Unless there's anything else.
Well, okay, I'll just keep on doing this then.
Yeah, that's fine. I wouldn't mind getting a, oh.
I do, I
A list of what's on the agenda.
I will, yeah, next week, I understand that Peppin and Suns and
Peppin and McCoy, OKM.
are on, and
Non-conformity.
Jason is
Best practical location?
Right.
Uh, yeah, so one's a best practical location on non-conformity. Not even, it's, it's not even really a best practical, best practical extent, whatever it is. He's doing 50% more than market, or with the value of the structure, actually, if he wants to put a foundation on the garage. The house foundation is not touching.
Is he in the shoreline zone?
In the shoreline zone, so it constitutes him coming from the planning board
Yeah.
to do that work.
So it'd be a best practical location of his garage?
Right, the garage is attached, but he's just looking, it's, it wasn't a cheap, dumb garage. But no, he's looking to do 30% expansion on his house. He wants to go up with his house, through the garage. Which is not, he's not doing that.
Interesting.
But you guys still have the liability, because where he's using, going up that much.
Right, we have to look at the
It's really, yeah.
The state of his existing foundation, how good it is, basically. Because if his existing foundation is gonna be, need to be replaced in the near future, we take that into account. If his existing foundation's new, then we, we take that into account. Well, that does sound like a loss to the agenda.
So, well, I want to just say this, which might, may or may not affect the agenda, but I don't want to blindside anyone. And the last meeting that I attended, at which Mr. Peppin was there, I know he's come back since, and I wasn't present. The last meeting that I attended, that Mr. Peppin was there, I pointed out that the deed to the parcel was there, I pointed out that the deed to the parcel is to write to, um, Peppin, and our Peppin and Sons Inc., and, um, Mann Road Pit Replacement LLC. And that, that, we need all the landowners to be on the application.
Thank you, sir.
The documents Jason is passing out to you now, I took a quick look at, because I was here an hour before the meeting, and from what I see, nothing has changed. The property owner still says our Peppin and Sons Inc., the deed is the same, it hasn't been deeded to just his company. So, I, it's premature to act on this, that he is not the applicant. Um, it needs to have both landowners, if I'm correct. The other issue that I will raise is the application is signed by Matthew Peppin, he may or may not be authorized to sign for our Peppin and Sons. We need to see proof of that. Is he, you know, one of the owners of the company? Is there a document that authorizes him? I know that that's his son, but that doesn't meet the legal standard. Um, so, also, um, on the total floor structure, uh, he has proposed five thousand, and then down below, it said five thousand, and it's been changed to forty-eight hundred, and it's initialed by MP, I assume that's Matthew Peppin. That needs to be changed up above, too. You know, that one, yeah, I'd probably let that go, in terms of going further on this next week, but I'm just saying, unless I'm ill-informed, next week I will simply be saying, I'm sorry, this is premature. You do not have the applicants listed, you do not have proof of ownership to do this, and so forth. So I don't want Mr. Peppin to be blindsided, I don't know if you're gonna talk to him, Jason, in between, but, um, I don't believe it's ripe for review yet, until these things are corrected.
It's also not fully up for review, anyway. I mean, they're, they're well aware that we're gonna be doing a site walk, I don't think they're looking to come in and do a, they're not, they already know that they're not, um, and so you can give them this information next week, and let it run.
That's-
I gave it last time, and-
And then follow through, then you just-
Well, they said something about that at the meeting, I don't remember.
Did they?
Can't remember what he said.
Well, he said that, in a nutshell, our Peppin and Sons Inc. owns three LLCs.
Correct. And at the-
That's all they said.
At the paperwork that I reviewed, prior to that meeting I was at, I indicated to Mr. Peppin, I see that you and your wife have a list of LLCs you own, Mann Road Pit Replacement is not included in that list. Actually, I don't know if that, I thought it was a New Hampshire company.
It's, uh, it's, I have what's left, and then what's in the-
No, yeah, not what's left. But, anyway, I said, I don't see that LLC listed amongst your corporate holdings. And if you remember, Mr. Peppin said, I don't own that, and then his wife said, yes, you do, and I said, well, you can sort that out at home, but the bottom line is, any entity that owns this, needs to be on the application, and we need to have proof of who owns that company, who has the authority to sign for it. So, it may be-
Right, I got that part.
That that's Mr. Peppin, but we haven't seen evidence of that yet, or I haven't. Um, and, not unlike any other application, if I come in, I'm gonna buy Pat's house, and I come in with an application, you're gonna say, you don't own it yet. Right? This is no different, in my view, because we don't know who owns this other company, and they are not on the application. They need to be. So, that's just, I'm just saying, I'm not prepared to move forward on anything next week, unless this has been cleaned up.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's not like we're gonna be moving quickly on this thing, because we do have to wait for the right time of year for, for biologists and everyone to survey the property themselves, so it's not like that we're holding them up with these-
Well, yeah, we have really busy nights here, that are packed solid with stuff to do, and I don't want to spend twenty minutes or half an hour on something, even though, yeah, well, you'll deal with it later, whatever, either it's ready to go, not, not to completion, but it's either appropriate to be for us, to be before us, or it isn't, before we act on it. And my opinion is, this is not ready to be before us, and so I don't wanna spend time on it until it is, cause we have plenty of other stuff to do.
Okay.
Not up to me, but I, that's my opinion.
Was it this one you were talking about?
And, and again, it was already stated.
Someone's seeing New Hampshire on it.
Yeah, I'm not either, and-
But I haven't seen-
But maybe, maybe, yeah, maybe, I might be wrong that it was New Hampshire, but I'm not wrong that I mentioned that company.
Right.
And who owns it, and they both need to be on the application. And they're not.
Hey, like, Grant David Peppin, grab a bowl.
So-
Oh, I see what you, yeah, I get what he's saying.
Alright.
Okay, so this is on the agenda, but we're not gonna be spending a lot of time on it.
No, fifteen minutes, I guess.
So then, do we have any other paperwork for the other?
No, I didn't, um, I don't, no, I don't have anything. So I only asked for this, cause I knew there was gonna be a lot of, and Chris, I'd, Chris pretty much had to say, hey, do you think you can get the documents in advance, so that we can look at them? So I, I reached out to Peppin.
Take some time.
I reached out to, uh, Matt with Peppin and Sons, and, uh, asked him if he could give me the documents as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm.
And he was able to provide me with these ones today, him and his dad, or his dad, and then, he's hoping to have, uh, the operations manual and the, uh, reclamation plan tomorrow. So I will provide them with you Wednesday, or you can come in and grab one.
And maybe the app will be updated when they come, that's great.
We have them, we have OKM.
OKM, um-
And our-
Do they have a, have they submitted a survey to you?
I have not seen the survey, I had answered some questions, I could reach out, I actually have to make sure he's still coming, I haven't talked to him in a few weeks.
Good idea.
Uh, I had just mentioned to it that he would be on this one.
You have received the survey, then?
Yeah, I will reach out to him tomorrow, um, to verify if he's even coming, and if he is coming to provide us with some stuff.
Yeah.
Cause you know, the other side of it is, I know people get frustrated with us when we don't proceed as they thought we were going to, cause they came in. And so I think it's better to just say, ideally before, if possible, if this stuff isn't ready, then you probably shouldn't come in. You, I mean, you can, I'm not telling them, don't come in, but it's not gonna get acted on, because when someone's come back, three, four, five times, they get angry at us, and it's not our fault.
I do. I'll, I'll reach out to them and let them know what, how, what was discussed, and if they wanna make the changes, then they can, if they wanna come in and want.
Yep.
And then you can tell them, you can tell them, you know, that, you know, tell them what, how you feel.
Right.
Concerns, that's pretty much what it's gonna come down to, is I'll, I'll reach out and let them know this, there was concern shown, and, um, you guys might wanna think about addressing them prior, if not, you can come in and, and they'll tell you, explain to you what their concerns is.
Have them one?
Yes.
Already?
We've already done it.
Stayed.
We did.
So, they've had, what, three, four weeks now?
I'm not, I think we need to clarify what, cause they, they didn't seem clear on it. So, I mean, we're not, I'm not clear on the owner, and they're not clear on what they need to, I mean-
Yeah.
According to this document.
I think if he would've understood what you needed, he probably would've done his best to do it, or he just, or just was a sight, out of, uh, whatever, mind, out of-
Out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah, they just forgot, yeah, I'm trying to think, I didn't really, out of sight, out of mind, didn't really make sense for what I was trying to say about it.
Yeah.
It just slipped their mind, so, I'll remind them and see what hap, if, if it's something that they wanna do, and if they don't make the changes, and they come in, and you guys can proceed however you want.
Right.
Pat, I can just see a motion to adjourn.
I promise they're eight-thirty.
So there's two more?
What?
Oh, that's two things on the agenda.
Oh, and then you have your greatest practical extent, which is, yeah, you'll see it, it's not, there's not much, I mean, you can, you can look at it.
Provide you with pictures of the founding?
Yeah, I've got, I've got everything like that, I probably should've given that to you, but-
Put it up on the screen for us.
Yeah, I will do that, um, yeah, it's a non-conforming law, he doesn't meet setbacks to the road, he doesn't meet setbacks to the water.
Pretty much every one of those laws is non-con-
So, and then, the, the other one is, um, Seth McCoy, extraction, uh, for, uh, reclaimed asphalt.
That's it.
That's it.
That's the one.
That's all he's looking for, yeah.
Jason, is there, um, in this documentation that he provided with the test pits, was there a location for the test pits, was there a map? Usually you get provided a map, I mean-
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to-
I think we would like to look at that.
I'll have to look.
Well, there wasn't, we asked where they were when we were on the site walk.
Yeah, I think you pointed out.
He said over there, it wasn't marked out where the test pit was.
Yeah, um, I know I have older maps that I believe show where there were test pits done.
Yeah, but those test pits were probably dug and material has now been excavated and trucked to Sanford or whatever.
Yeah, 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 cause I'm, I just have older maps. But I'm, I'll look into his map, uh, by, when I get a second, I know. That, is that something that you're gonna require, you know, or you just wanna know where they are?
Or Bernie is saying, to come with the documents, so that we can press that.
Yeah. I don't remember seeing him on his-
They weren't there.
They weren't.
No, there were, there was, it was part of the report, it wasn't the entire report. I think that that should be the entire report. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.